All this meeting to order, for those who care to, please stand for an opening prayer and a pledge of the flag. Mr. Cameron, if you would, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this evening and thank you for all that you do for us and for our great country, Lord. And tonight, Lord, I just pray for this nation. I pray for our city and I pray for wisdom, I pray for direction, and just your favor upon our country and this city, Lord. And be with us in everything we do tonight, tomorrow, be with our families, be with our country, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Mayor's announcements, appointments, and votes. Mr. John Jones had a birthday September 10th, so let's see Mr. Jones wish him a happy birthday. Sean Selena's birthday is October 9th, if you see him, wish him a happy birthday. And Chief Lawton's birthday is October 6th, so we'll wish him a happy birthday now. You'll step up this way, sir?
Do you want to?
You want to?
No. I can't. There's a lot of money in there, buddy. Big bucks.
All right, chief. I'm gonna be like the mayor. Twenty-seven.
That's a hit hole. That's a HR violation.
All right. I'd like to open up a public hearing concerning an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, amending the official zoning map by changing the classification of approximately 80 acres located at 2673 East Sawyer Road from a planned development district, PD 12-01, to agricultural, agricultural AG. And that is Exhibit C. And we have staff report from Mr. Tyson.
Thank you. This free zone will bring this 80 acres located at the northeast corner of Farm Road 97 and East Sawyer Road out of the Eclipse Event Center Planned Development District, which, if you recall, was a large-scale, over 1,000 acres equestrian center planned development that included quite a bit of public infrastructure and large buildings, arenas, things of that nature. It will take it out of that zoning and into the conventional agricultural AG zoning district.
Very good, thank you. Anyone wishing to speak for this public hearing, please step forward, give us your best three minutes. Oh, sign in also, please.
Sign in here?
Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Brandy O'Reilly and I'm the one hoping to do this development on Sawyer Road as they mentioned. We are hoping to develop Dynamic Strides Therapy, which will be a nonprofit therapy center for pediatrics. We will offer occupational physical and speech therapies for kids with special needs. We want to specialize in equine assisted therapy, which is also called hippotherapy, so we would have horse therapy on property, as well as offering a sensory gym. And what the sensory gym would be, would be to provide therapy for children with sensory needs, also making that part of the facility open to the public. So these children with sensory needs that need sensory input frequently can come to this facility and have a place that they can, they can work on those skills and calm their bodies down. And so it's a really exciting opportunity to be able to open a sensory gym. They're putting them in all across the United States and this would be the first one of its type in this area, so it'd be really, really cool. So basically, you know, what we're hoping to do is offer some stuff to our community that doesn't exist currently. And that's the thing, as therapists, that we've seen a need for these families to have a place where they can bring their children and get several different types of specialty therapies, all in one location. And there's, there's nothing quite like what we're hoping to accomplish. Therapy that's more in a natural environment instead of, you know, just the clinical setting. In a place where these kids can come and have a good time, you know, just enjoy themselves while they're working hard to get stronger and to be more functional, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak for this public hearing? Step forward, sign in, and give us your best three minutes.
Hello, I'm Tiffany Eggleston and my daughter, Emeline, attends hippotherapy. She's eight and she actually has had an opportunity to do the program since she's been two. And just to give you a little background on my daughter, real fast, she is nonverbal, legally blind, she has multiple seizures daily, multiple seizure types. She can't sit up, hold her head up, she can't walk, anything like that. So having this opportunity to be on a horse has been huge for my daughter. Her body craves movement, even though she's never walked a day in her life, her brain knows it's supposed to be moving, jumping, running, everything. So what we found is that, as crazy as it sounded till I saw it with my own eyes, when my daughter gets on this horse, she actually, by the movement of the horse, it actually gives her an opportunity to, her body works well, better together and she's able to hold her head up a little better. Like literally, when the horse starts moving, her head goes from down here to up. And then when this horse stops moving, her head goes down. And it's something that I haven't been able to get with my daughter in any other therapy facility anywhere around the world. It's only been on a horse that I've seen this happen. This is huge for a lot of reasons, not only is she able to strengthen her head, her trunk or her core, if you will, but also her arms that are helping her stay up while she's in the sitting position. She's able to do all of that. And then we also have seen after, oh, my daughter had a brain surgery, and after her brain surgery, we were able to see that after two weeks on a horse, three to four days after she's off of it, we see a cognitive difference every single week from that point forward for the whole rest of the eight weeks. I can't explain it, but it has happened every single time we have done it. We have had the opportunity to be a part of almost every session since my daughter has turned two, so that's, that's been amazing. With my daughter's gene deficiency that she has, which is called CDKL5, hippotherapy and water therapy are the best types of therapy that you can do for her. So having a therapy that you can not only get strong physically, but mentally, again, there's not another therapy out there, and believe me, I've looked long and far for therapies for my daughter, I have never found another therapy that does both things for her at one time. It's not just for kiddos like my daughter, though. The range of individuals that will, will benefit from this are huge. They also make it fun. And my, my example for both of that, my nephew, he is six, he has a lot of sensory issues, he is very weak in his core, and he's actually having the opportunity to do this, this session. And I was asking him about it this weekend, and before I even had a chance to say, what do you think? Because he got to ride a horse with Ms. Marge, you know, just the other day. He said that he was training to become a trick rider, and that's what he got out of it. So instead of him thinking, I'm going to therapy to work on my core, I'm going to therapy to work on these things, they made it to, it was fun. It was fun for him. I've seen it to where they sing songs, they play games. My nephew's instance, they, they do trick riding skills. I asked him what he was learning and he said it was to balance on his hands and knees. Well, that's working on your core, and honestly, I don't know what else because I'm a therapist, but it's, it's amazing that they're able to make it so fun for them. The height, the backside is, because they're only eight-week sessions right now, for at least in my, in my daughter's instance, we'll take three steps forward, you will see her get stronger every single week she does it, but at the end of the eight weeks, we have to stop because it gets too hot or because right now they only do three sessions or two sessions a year. And then we take at least two steps backwards in the time that we're off. Now, believe me, we're so grateful for that one step we hold on to, but if this does pass, pass through, this will give my daughter and a lot of other individuals an opportunity to continue this year-round. The other huge thing is with it being a climate-controlled environment, my daughter doesn't do well in heat or extreme cold, which is one of the reasons they have to stop it and only do so many sessions. This is another reason it will allow them to be able to go year-round and my daughter actually be able to participate. So not only just for my daughter, but for all of the individuals like my nephew and everyone else that would have an opportunity to, to utilize this amazing facility, please, please vote yes to, to pass this through because, like I said, it's not just my daughter or Marge or Brandy that this is going to benefit, but it will benefit a lot of amazing kiddos in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for this public hearing? Step forward.
My name is Elizabeth Obree and I'm here also to speak on behalf of Dynamic Strides. But first, I want to make sure that everyone understands the importance of therapy and what it can do for, for individuals, especially in this pediatric phase when we're looking from birth to 18 years old. My oldest daughter has a developmental diagnosis, didn't speak till she was over three, could scream till her nose bled, and with the proper early intervention care, she became hired, she grew up, went to college, and was, is employed at Disney World. What we're looking at when we are talking about looking at Dynamic Strides Therapy is, as Brandy mentioned, being able to generalize this therapy. The importance of therapy is so vital, to be able to get out of that traditional classroom setting, that therapeutic setting, the hospital setting, to get out into the real world, to be outside and to play and to have exposure at a gym and to be able to do these things in a different environment. Helps to take those skills that were, our children are learning in a sterile environment and be able to generalize them outside those four walls. And Dynamic Strides is amazing at doing this. I have two sons who have participated in Dynamic Strides and the changes, and I have, with having three children with various disabilities from autism, epilepsy, brain damage, and a multitude of other diagnoses, what I have seen at Dynamic Strides has been an amazing change in involvement in my children. It covers not just one aspect of therapy, it covers the whole body and the whole mind. My 14-year-old suffered regression when he hit age seven. He used to be able to, to read and write and take spelling tests and do these things at a minimal level. He still had autism, but he also has brain damage and an autoimmune disorder. When he lost those skills and was not able to do them at home, at school, or at, in the classroom, he could still do them on the back of a horse. He could still say his ABCs. He could still answer questions when I didn't see that in the, in any other settings. Not only is there a therapeutic impression made upon our children and we see this progress, there's also a connection with, with the animals, with the horse. To be able to, to be able to bond in that way is, is more than just therapy, it's a gift. To be able to see a child that may not express certain emotions, to be able to see them go from being afraid to touch a horse to embracing that horse in, you know, in a number of sessions as we've practiced. What I love about Dynamic Strides also is they look very individual at what does the children, the children that are riding, what are their needs, what are the goals that we're looking for? Having two sons going at the same time, their programs and the ideas that the therapist set forth are completely different because they have different needs and they, they progress at different levels. And so that's also what I love about being able to utilize Dynamic Strides Therapy is it's a very individualized. I can't, I can't say enough about, about what I have seen and the magic that I have seen, the, just the tears as a mother watching as your child is out there responding, doing these things and taking their, their skill level to another height. And as, as was mentioned, the, those skills that are obtained on the back of that horse are also carried on, they're not just left on the back of the horse. What I've seen, the laughter and the joy leaving therapy and the excitement from a nonverbal child on the way because that's where he knows he's going and be able to say, "That way, that way, that way," because he knows where the barn is. Speaks volumes. And I hope that you will consider passing this so that we can not only bring this to, keep this going for our children, but to expand and bring this to many more children and our older adults. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak for this public hearing?
Hi, my name is Marge Cheeseman. Sign my name here. I'm an occupational therapist and I have been in charge of Dynamic Strides therapeutic riding for the past several years. These folks that have come to speak about what their children have experienced are clients of mine. They're, they're family members almost of mine. And I just kind of want to close the gap here a little bit in, if you don't understand where we're at, what's going on. We've been doing this program, I started Dynamic Strides five or six years ago, and we've only been able to do, as she alluded to, eight-week sessions because weather, weather gets hot, weather gets cold. I don't have a barn that is insulated, that is climate-controlled, that is feasible for doing this. But Brandy and I are working hard to make this happen so that it's available year-round and also to add other elements so that children who, maybe it's not appropriate for them to be on a horse, we can offer them things in the clinic and we can offer them things in the sensory gym and that kind of thing. So I just wanted to kind of close the gap there. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I appreciate your support.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for this public hearing? Anyone wishing to speak against this public hearing, please step forward and give us your best three minutes? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. I would like to open up a public hearing concerning an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, approving a special use permit to operate a farm-based therapy clinic on a portion of land located at 2673 East Sawyer Road. This will be Exhibit B. Staff reports. Mr. Garrett Tyson.
This public hearing concerns the consideration of a bill that would authorize a special use permit that would give permission to the property owner to construct and operate the farm-based therapy clinic that the guests in the council meeting here this evening just described.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak for this public hearing, please step forward and give us your name and your best three minutes?
Can we just say ditto?
We, I think we have all of that. Anyone wishing to speak against this public hearing, step forward and give us your best three minutes? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. On to citizen participation. Anyone wishing to speak about anything not on the agenda, please step forward, give us your name, and give us your best three minutes. Anything not on the agenda. Seeing none, citizen participation is closed. I need a motion of second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-1. 6-0-1, I'm sorry. On to financial report. Welcome, John O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mayor Carter, and good evening, everyone. We just have two items of interest for tonight. First is on sales taxes, which I trust you have the worksheet provided. We talked a little bit about this at the last meeting where for the month of August, general sales tax revenues were $238,376. This was 5% less than August of 2015. However, we still main, we are still ahead of ourselves at year-to-date at approximately 7.74%, and I feel pretty confident that we will still maintain that, that rate as we go into holiday seasons. With respect to the 1/8 cent fire sales tax, that also was down slightly from same month last year at $29,808, 5.3% less than August of 15. However, that is also above for year-to-date at just over 12%. And then we just recently got our motor fuel tax numbers and at $34,042 for August, that was down 7%, and we are just even year-to-date versus 2015 for those. The second item I wanted to bring up, and apologize, this just got into your council packets this evening, was the, I alluded to this at last meeting, we are, had been revising our monthly cash reports, and I provided for you a memorandum and as well as the format for the report for the month of August. It's a little bit more detailed so that we can advise council as to just where our cash is coming from. Comes, the memo should, is, is pretty self-explanatory, I'll just very briefly sketch on this a little bit. We have three sections. Operating cash, which is basically, it's, it's like the cash in your checkbook. Monies come in, monies go out to keep running the city on a daily basis. Reserve balances that have been set up by, self-imposed by city staff in previous years to allow for anticipated future needs. And restricted balances, which represent monies that have been restricted either by ballot measure, by the voters, or by bond covenants such as debt reserves. And along those lines, what we've also discovered is sales tax revenues that have been voted in previous elections are a part of our restricted balance. We are trying to monitor this on an ongoing basis to assure that sales tax revenues are properly used for what was voted by the voters. And so what I'm going to do for right now is give the council a chance to review, digest all this information. If you have questions, you are welcome to contact me during business hours or email me. And as I say, if you have any questions or perhaps ideas for enhancing the report format to make it a better management tool, we are always open to those suggestions. And with that, I am done.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Any questions or comments on the financial report? Mr. South?
John, how long have, have we had those restricted and unrestricted revenues? Why were they not prior, pulled apart?
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I think.
Restricted versus unrestricted cash? How come, how long ago, how long have they been together?
Well, I think in, in the past, past formats have shown unrestricted versus restricted cash. However, we, more recently, we have decided to take a fresh look at this to determine if it's truly unrestricted or if there are certain restrictions placed on it either by ballot measure or for, or some other measure here. So that's why we are, we are taking this in a different direction to try and get a better, better handle on what our cash resources are and what they can be used for, if that answers your question.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Brandon, I think what you're looking for is talking about Stormwater Street sales tax. From what I can tell, those have never been delineated. I mean, they've kind of been together for quite some time and so.
They're still, like, they're still staying.
Yes, and so until, what is, so what is reflected is, in that number is a little bit different, but anyway, what he's working on and what I've, what I've instructed was to, starting in August, to go back and to say, show what is that, what that should be until we can actually look at those numbers to know what those actually should be and have them audited to know what that number should be. You'll have to take the special audit to get that done.
But do we know how long it's been?
Ever since the inception of the tax. So even though the ordinance reflects that it would be a kind of, or a separate, that's one of the things that was in, in interview was that once, that those two accounts would be established. And so making that go back and establish that account is something that needs to be done. However, one thing that Public Works did do was at least document or at least keep track of the use of those funds to, say, 2012. And so what is being done would be looking from 2012 to the present, what should that, if you were to look at those two ta, two numbers like Streets and Stormwater, what those two numbers be? And so I think that until that is actually identified, all they can do is reflect what August is from whenever I've asked it for it to be changed. Does that answer the question?
Sure.
Hold me.
And to that point, and I think I mentioned this before, we are in the process of revising the accounting system to break out Stormwater into its own separate funds and make it separate from Streets so that, to delineate and track separately those two, two different sales tax revenues. So that is in the works and you, between now and I trust the end of the year, you'll see, this, this is a work in process, basically, and you're going to see this change over time as we get to those goals.
I have a question of a different nature. So this, this is actual, right? This is how it fits today?
As of August 31st.
Okay. Is there, is there some kind of budgeted numbers that you can add to this so we can kind of figure out the baseline, where we're at, how healthy we are? Because to me, these, these are arbitrary. I mean, I don't know if this number, if we're in a good spot or not.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So one of the things that, since I've come on board, has asked John to review all the same stuff, is where are we? So it's the whole concept, you can't manage what you can't measure. If you don't know, if you got 100 days operating cash, and so where is the operating cash? What is the, what did the ballot language designate that we could use it for? So all those things have to be identified as to, for example, a good accepted accounting principle is that you have 100 days operating cash. Well, parks tax allows you to do operating out of that tax. Stormwater does not allow for operations, it's capital only. Street allows for, and so because those are not identified and they're kind of all just, like you said, just in one, because the first question that started this discussion was building City Hall and buying land. Well, how are we going to build City Hall? How much is available? This doesn't tell you, that number looks like there's six and a half million, seven and a half million dollars in there, and it's actually restricted to a certain account. So as we begin to work on what, in the middle of the budget process, I'm asking these same questions from John's provided, to me, is to where do we actually stand? And so hopefully in the budget cycle, we will actually have a work session that talks about budgeting and the actual position of your numbers so that we can make decisions on whether to buy land, whether to build a building. Because we're not, right now, we're not in a position, nor will I recommend us to be in a position to spend until we know why or where we're at in that position. Because we're talking about OTC, we're talking about a lot of stuff, so all that stuff's kind of been put on weight mode until we identify those numbers, even for myself, is just coming in new, wanting to know how that money is allocated. So we, we do need to identify, so we're setting up a separate account for Street and Stormwater. But what's also important is, of the 100 days operating cash, what is the makeup of that money? And so hopefully we'll break out utility, it won't just be utility, it should be water and wastewater. And so you know what each account has rather than them blended together. And so it's hard to make decisions when it's together. And so in fairness, like I asked John today, we've gone through, I believe it's three or four finance directors that have used different templates. So it's kind of like, I want to set one tone, we adopt that by ordinance collectively, we agree for how we're going to measure our money and stick to that regardless if I'm here, John's here, whoever's doing that, that it's one standard template that we can follow. But I'd like to lead that in the budget discussion rather than each council meeting in between that. So I'd like to have that as part of our dialogue before you even approve the budget, as you know why those.
Sure. So just make sure I understand, I'm totally in agreement with that. Understanding, separating those accounts helps us identify those monies, but what you're saying, we'll even take it further and be able to put a number with 100 days operating cash. We'll know what that dollar figure is so that we have something measurable.
Yes, like for example, what the measurement is, is my understanding is it takes a million dollars per month, so you need $3 million in operating cash.
That's what I'm.
So we need to adopt that rather than saying, because if the city grows, so you would know, like if you were buying a piece of property, when you go to make that decision, you'd say, where would this drop us into our operating cash reserve? And when people ask you, why do you got a $3 million reserve? Your quick answer would be, because we want 100 days operating cash in the budget. You need to know why you have it there, but you also need to know how we're going to build it back up. So there's a lot of why and what for that we need to explain, not only to here, but to, to the community as well as to why we have the money set up the way we do. And that's what we're working on. There's a lot of transition, there's a lot of things that's being found in those discussions that, you know, it's going to be a little bit bumpy for a while, but we need to build on a solid financial platform, and I think that's what we're trying to get to with looking at a special audit to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Any other questions for Mr. O'Donnell or Mr. Cameron? Is that microphone on? Okay.
I couldn't hear.
We couldn't hear, but just checking. I guess it was just us, I don't know. No other questions? I need a motion of second for approval of the financial report.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 7-0. On reports from staff, Mr. Cameron?
Thank you. So I've already talked about the financial reporting that we're going to be doing in the budget, so I kind of got to that in John's report. But I look forward to engaging in a discussion that tells us what our current state, and even talking about the current state, while it's not ideal, and while it needs to be a little bit more clear to make better decisions with our money, I look forward to the budget discussion. Because I look forward to bringing you a kind of, a platform of stuff that we're going to do, and information that you're going to see, and kind of engaging in what you would like to see more into that report. So I look forward to that. I want to say, congratulations to Garrett Tyson on being selected as the new Community Development Director. I look forward to working with Garrett and the work that he's done. I think he's done an outstanding job. Just in the three months that I've been here, I've seen a lot of growth, even in myself, and I see a lot of potential for the community. I'm excited about the direction of the city and just from that perspective. It's a new day in the Community Development Department. We changed the name, it was Planning and Development, we've kind of changed it to a whole new title, but the work is going to be somewhat very aggressive, very assertive. I'm very happy to say we had a great compliment from that department today, saying that that was the best they'd ever dealt with in doing a development out in the Brookline Development Area. And so I was happy to hear that we're starting to do a lot of the flow, that department is moving very well. So congratulations, Garrett, on your appointment. I know we all look forward to great things, and I think you'll do an outstanding job. I know you will. Effective today, the city has now got its Twitter account up and going, so I encourage everyone that's here to go onto Twitter, like it, retweet it, send it out there. I commend Connie for getting that done. Hopefully we'll get Instagram up really soon. And the reason why is it's critical, just like the budget, it's just like our finances, like everything, we need to be as transparent, as open, get the message out about what's going on with the City of Republic. And it's just a quick way to spread information, kind of like the situation we had last week that was unfortunate with the abduction. It was out on Twitter very fast, it would be out from us the same way, but that information came from the city and then the news media picked it up, went to Twitter. People are getting into that, are getting that information much faster, so we need to be doing that more with our Twitter account in addition to the Facebook page. The attempt at kidnapping, I want to, number one, just grateful that the young man is safe. That's the first thing before I go and commend and talk about how, I'm thankful for the situation, that it could have been much worse. But to the police department, to the school district, very fact that we had officers at the field where the child could go back to the field, actually there was an officer present. But I appreciate, we were up pretty much all night, I know Chief was up all night. We were talking about how to communicate and make sure the message was right and that the right parties were involved. It's not easy because when you have a 10-year-old involved in a situation, you need to make sure there are different agencies that have to be contacted. People question how fast you get to it. We can't really disclose everything in that moment because everything's moving very fast. So Chief, I commend the quick work, the stopping calling in, the Child Advocacy Center, the things that you did to ensure that you followed those steps, but also collaborating with the school district immediately. I know our school superintendent was at the police station collaborating at the station with the chief. And so those are the things you don't see, that kind of crafted that message. Is it perfect? I can't say. I just commend the work that went on that night to get to the point where the message got out as quickly as it did and the work that they did to try to do the best with the information that was out there. And so I commend everyone that was working on that case and continues to work on that case. And I definitely feel for the individual that has the white van in town that's been seen three or four times. And to the folks whose picture was posted, you know, I mean, I would encourage anyone not to threaten or, sometimes that can get out of hand, and I just, they were following a lead, and I just be very careful with that, and I just appreciate their cooperation in a difficult situation. And I'll move on real quickly. David and I met with OTO and MoDOT last week. We talked about the roundabout at the high school. And so, but a very good discussion with MoDOT, asked them questions, they provided some answers that are in your admin report. I provided an update of what that discussion entailed to kind of get some more answers. They did make some provisions in that discussion about the roundabout for future growth, building the subgrade around it where it would be easier to upgrade much quicker rather than just building for the now. It would also make it in the event that you needed to remove it, put in a traffic signal, different things. I do believe they're looking at those from traffic counts. They agreed to do a revised model with increased traffic counts, things of that nature. So I appreciate the work of OTO, David, and MoDOT for meeting with us, at least give it a little bit more consideration. I will tell you this, it does not meet the traffic warrant. There is no way that, I mean, it was based upon all the other intersections in the state that are competing for those same dollars. That's the one thing I heard, is it didn't meet that warrant. It was like, what did? So they provided for us how the federal guidelines go into meeting that warrant, and then some things that they provided, where a merge lane that you could merge directly into the school going eastbound so that students would not have to enter. So there was a lot of discussion. I appreciate the meeting, and I just wanted to kind of give an update that we did meet, but right now the plan is proceeding with the roundabout, so, or you can withdraw. I guess the idea would be to withdraw the request, and that is still an option. But I wanted to provide that update, and that is, I'll have, have more, but we got to keep on trucking.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. On the future community events, Mr. Keeling's not here, and there's 12 of these things. September 27th through November 10th, Arthritis Foundation Exercise Program classes, Tuesdays and Thursdays, 1:30 PM. This is a free event at the Republic Community Center. September 29th, Senior Movie Day, 3:00 PM. This is a free event, free popcorn and coffee are provided at Republic Community Center. I do not know what that movie is. September 30th through October 21st is a Todd Academy for ages 2 through 5. Fridays, 9:30 or 10:45 AM, pre-registration is required at the Republic Activities Building. September 30th is the last day for the youth girls' fall volleyball registration for grades 3 through 8. Season begins October 24th at the Republic Community Center. October 1st is Pumpkin Days, please come out and support Pumpkin Days. October 3rd, 10th, 17th, 24th, and 31st, toddler open gym for ages 0 to 5 years. 9:00 AM, no registration required, Republic Activities Building. October 5th through the 9th is toddler tumbling, ages 2 to 5 years, Wednesdays, 5:30 or 6:30 PM. Free registration is required at the Republic Activities Building. October 15th is Movie Night at the AMP, 6:45. This is a free event, you'll like that. The movie will be Star Wars: The Force Awakens. The AMP is located in J.R. Martin Park, 300 East Hines. October 27th is Senior Movie Day at 3:00 PM. This is a free event, free popcorn and coffee provided at the Republic Community Center. And again, I still don't know what that movie is. October 28th is the 8th Annual Boogie Bash. Activities begin at 5:30 PM, admission is free, you'll like that. No registration required. The AMP located at J.R. Martin Park, 300 East Hines. October 31st is the 20th Annual Treat Yourself in Republic. 5:30 to 8:30 PM, this is a free event, no registration is required. Maps of participating locations will be available beginning on October 24th. And lastly, November 3rd is the annual benefit luncheon for People Helping People, 11:00 AM to 1:30 PM at the Hood United Methodist Church, 139 North Walman. On the Board Commission's and Committee's schedule, Board of Adjustments, October 6th, Capital Improvement Committee, September 28th, City Council Meeting, October 10th and October 24th, and Planning and Zoning Commission is October 17th. We have no old business or tail limes, on to new business. I need a motion, oh. Gotcha. Okay. I need a motion of second for the first reading of Bill Number 16-20.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Was it 19 or 20?
It's 20.
Oh, got you, got you. Sorry.
Ms. Brendan?
In order- Oops. Brendan.
Got everybody confused.
Sorry. In order to the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, amending the official zoning map by changing the classification of approximately 80 acres located at 2673 East Sawyer Road from a planned development, Restraict PD 12-01, to agricultural AG.
Thank you, Brenda. Mr. Tyson?
The property that is subject to the rezone mentioned in the title here is composed of about 80 acres located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Farm Road 97 and East Sawyer Road. It is presently a small portion of the large Eclipse Event Center planned development district. If it is rezoned as proposed by the applicant to the agricultural district, that planned development district will remain intact with the exception of this 80 acres. Nobody else's zoning is changed by this application, but this particular 80 acres will be removed from that planned development. The part of that planned development that was contained within this 80 acres, it was minimal development, some condominiums and some roadways were planned through this site, but it wasn't extensive. The present land use of this 80 acres is what we would describe as rural residential and agricultural uses. It is surrounded primarily by other similar uses except for to the south, across East Sawyer Road is the Brookline Park, and then a little bit further to the east is the McLean Distribution Center. Since we don't exactly know what the growth pattern will be, assuming that the Eclipse Event Center does not eventually develop, which there has been no activity and no apparent progress made on that development for several years now, assuming that that doesn't develop the way that it was originally planned, the growth pattern is not yet well-established here. So instead of, this sort of comes in conjunction with the next bill, which is the special use permit for the therapy clinic, rather than advising the applicant to just try to rezon all 80 acres or a portion of the 80 acres to local commercial, which would be a sort of a spot zoning, instead go back to agricultural, reserve this 80 acres in order to allow us to wait to see how development does occur around it, and then accomplish what they want to accomplish by issuing the special use permit, which is the subject of the next bill. Currently, public infrastructure, it's served by East Sawyer Road, of course, which has improved for a stretch, not all the way to the site here, but most of the way from State Highway MM going west. Water and sewer are very close to the property, but I would not say that it's immediately accessible at this point, which is just another reason to go to the agricultural district rather than something more intense. Staff recommends approval of this bill. The Planning and Zoning Commission also unanimously recommended approval.
Thank you, Mr. Tyson. Any questions, comments, or concerns for Mr. Tyson from council?
Garrett, what kind of, like, going from commercial to agricultural, as far as building type, parking lot, stuff like that, I mean, is there, but it's agricultural, could it be chat? Could it be, does it have to be gutter? What type of variance do we have by doing that?
Sure. I'll just answer that this way. Going to the local commercial district, just conventional, was not my recommendation for the reason, not wanting to spot zone and get too far out ahead of ourselves infrastructure-wise. But it also does provide more flexibility if we go to agricultural and then use a special use permit to allow the development that they want to do. It does provide a little bit more flexibility than we would have if we just went to conventional local commercial. This site is not located within our overlay district, so you wouldn't have to worry about any additional facade requirements or anything like that. But there would be, there would be less room to maneuver to allow the development that we're talking about, the dynamic strides, if we had gone to the conventional zoning. Does that answer the question?
Yeah. Do you foresee any major infrastructure changes to the road or to anything to help traffic? I mean, I know you've got McLean that's in there as well, or is it pretty much the way it needs to be?
I think for the first half mile, I think it is likely the way that it needs to be. Beyond that, eventually there will be some improvements required in order to support future development when it's fully built out. Right now, once you get past the area that we improved in partnership with Green County to support McLean, it narrows down to sort of your typical farm road. So eventually that will require improvement.
And that's on the other side of 97, right?
That would be, no, the improved section does not go all the way to 97.
Okay.
It only goes for about a half mile.
I'm with you, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Tyson? This is a first read. If you have any questions, please notify Mr. Tyson. Need a motion of second for the first reading of Bill Number 16-19.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
In order to the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, approving a special use permit to operate a farm-based therapy clinic on a portion of land located at 2673 East Sawyer Road.
Thank you, Brenda. Mr. Tyson?
This special use permit is designed to allow for the development of the farm-based therapy clinic that was subject to the public hearing earlier. You heard a lot of testimony there about the nature of the clinic. But this is, in the eyes of the city's municipal code, a commercial use. And so it would not be regularly permitted in the agricultural district, assuming that eventually becomes the zoning of this 80 acres. But it can be approved as a special use permit. And in order to address the issues that council members self-raised in consideration of the last bill about, you know, if it's agricultural, are the requirements the same? They are not the same, which is why in this particular special use permit, staff is recommending a number of conditions in order to get it as close to what the conventional commercial regulations would be while not stifling this particular development, but still having it developed in a manner that would be normal for a commercial use. And so you'll see that list of recommendations in your exhibit. Those are also already contained within the bill that will be voted on at the next council meeting. If you have any questions about those conditions, I'll be happy to answer them. A lot of these conditions are code-driven and would arguably apply anyways, but staff believed it would be clear to go ahead and include those in the special use permit so that everybody's on the same page as to what is required.
Any questions for Mr. Tyson? Seeing none, this is a first reading. If you do have any questions, please contact Mr. Tyson. Thank you, Garrett. On to other business. Resolution Number 16-R-74, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, approving a preliminary plat for Heart of America Park, a commercial subdivision located within the Brookline Business Park. Need a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Mr. Tyson? Again, with the Garrett Tyson show.
Forgot I was up here for a third time. This preliminary plat is not your typical preliminary plat. Normally, we are presenting these in an effort to subdivide land into multiple lots. But in this case, what we're doing is allowing for the creation of just one single lot that will be comprised of about 25 acres. This 25 acres, subject to this preliminary plat, is the remaining phase, the third phase of the Brookline Business Park, which you, if you've been on council for a while, you've seen that, you've seen this business park come before you on a number of occasions to revise the layout, to revise the arrangement, and now we'll be doing that for the last time here, assuming that this gets approved. What this does is it takes that remaining phase that was originally planned to have a road network built through it. It already has water and sanitary sewer installed and in service in the ground through the middle of this site, but the current property owner wishes to use it as a single user, as one single development for a large distribution facility. And so this preliminary plat plans for the relocation of those utilities that are installed and the rearrangement of the transportation that would serve this particular area. What this will do is Empire Avenue will now come to a termination, a dead end at its southern end, opposite of the cul-de-sac that exists to serve Watson Metal and Wilbert Funeral Services, if you're familiar with the Business Park. And then the future extension of Farm Road 148, that is a part of our major thoroughfare plan that the city has adopted, we will be getting right-of-way dedicated for the future, potential future location of that roadway, all across the southern boundary of this site, all across the southern boundary, if you can see here on the pre-plat, all the way from State Highway MM, across that narrow strip, all the way over to the 99 acres that's also zoned industrial to the west. That right-of-way was also a subject of development agreement that council approved probably about a month ago now, in which the city agreed to share in the cost of intersection improvements- improvements at Farm Road 148 and State Highway MM, and in exchange, we would get this right-of-way, uh, and we would also get, uh, a guarantee that the developer would provide an emergency access easement. Because the other, uh, impact that this new arrangement has is that it makes King Street, uh, King Street intersects, uh, with, uh, State Highway MM to become the primary way in and out of the Business Park. That will now be the sole way in and out of the Business Park. And so in the event of an emergency that would close that intersection, we want another, an additional way to get people in and out of the park, and so the developer, uh, by means of this preliminary plat and also by means of the development agreement that was approved, will provide an easement and also, uh, paved access lane that in the event of an emergency, that can be used to get people in and out of the Brookline Business Park. Uh, staff is recommending approval of this preliminary plat. I'll make one note, if you notice, uh, in some of the notes from the Planning and Zoning Commission, they recommended approval of this preliminary plat, uh, but added a note that it was possible, uh, at the time, that some water infrastructure that is illustrated on here may need to get extended, uh, further. Uh, the issue is, is a fire flow issue. Uh, we believe now at this point that that water main extension, uh, probably will need to occur, that the water will need to be looped in order to get more water flow for fire protection purposes. It's not illustrated on the plat that's in front of you tonight. That's not necessarily a concern for staff. If it's required by the International Fire Code, they'll put the water main in if it's needed, regardless of whether we have it shown on the plat here tonight. So I want to make council aware of that situation, that it's not shown here, it's likely that it will be required, um, but it's not necessary that it's here in order to get that water main installed.
And you just say the planning and zoning, that was a six to zero vote recommending approval of that plaque, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Tyson? Lot of information there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
One item that is being brought up, and this is the development that I was talking to, that where we've been working on it, I do appreciate the council's consideration to work on the intersection to move this project forward, but the fire flow is an issue in that entire area out there, and so I think that's one thing that we need to be communicating on the front end that, that we're doing, but in the situation here, they're looking at a thousand feet prior or more of a water line that is probably $60,000 to do the project, and what's going to happen is going to benefit other surrounding property owners. So one thing about it is I may bring this back to say, how do we partner in on that? Because if the 20 acres adjacent to it are developed, that developer's putting the bill for all the development around it as well to shore up the fire flow in addition, so there's got to be a way to help that development recover its costs if it's helping an adjacent development. And so we're, we're benefiting from infrastructure we didn't put in, at least putting it in so a side development may end up coming in to the side of that. So it's a whole lot of rambling, but at the same point, I'd like to make sure that the developers somehow made whole as part of that, or partially whole for their proportionate share for the fire flow. When a neighboring, so make, there's a, there's a 20-acre track somewhere in the middle of that, correct? So if they develop that and they connect into that water line, they're getting the benefit of his, of this, this developer's water, and I think there ought to be a way for him to get recovery of that. So we need to work on that in our ordinances as well, if it doesn't make a punitive to one and help the other and partner that cost out. So I just want to be clear about that, you might see Heart of America again on a water cost share agreement. So I appreciate the work that's going in there and the work that we're doing to get that project done. Thank you.
Any questions? Any other questions for Mr. Tyson or Mr. Cameron?
Mr. Tyson, I have a question. So the one single access down here, I think it's on the south side of this, the access that they're putting in to not create or not have one entry into the Business Park, is that always going to be accessible for people or is it controlled by the property owner? I mean, how is that going to work and how big is this access?
It, uh, I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought that up because it touches on an, an important point I want to make council aware of. Uh, it would not be open all of the time. It would only be open in the case of an emergency, in which case the city needed to open it, uh, and the fire department would have the necessary, um, access permissions or keys in order to make sure everything was open. It will be paved, it will be at least 20 feet wide in order to also support emergency vehicles, uh, but it would not be open all of the time. The original arrangement here was to have two ways in and out of the Business Park that would be public thoroughfares open all of the time. So as a result of closing one of those off or only making it available in the case of emergencies, it does sort of focus more traffic on the intersection of Kings and State Highway MM. Uh, so of course there's a potential traffic concern, um, given that we're now focusing all of that traffic at one point instead of what the original plan was to have it. Actually, if you go all the way back to the original plan, you would have had three ways in and out. So to focus that all at one point does create somewhat of a traffic concern, probably a traffic concern that we would have either way, whether we approved this or didn't. Uh, I am more confident now, and I've stared at this for years, I'm more confident with this arrangement that if we do this, we will be actually in a better position, given where we sit today, uh, with this development and what's going on around it. We'll actually be in a better position to tackle a potential traffic issue at that intersection than we would be otherwise, long-term. So if and when there is a concern, I believe that this will put us in a better position than if we were to just, uh, walk away from it, uh, or, um, say, well, no, we want to go back to the original. Um, I don't see that working out as well as, as what we've got in front of us.
And Chief Constance, since you haven't had anything to say on Mike, um, you seen, you seen the layout of this, correct?
I thought I was going to luck out.
Yes, I have seen the layout and we've been, uh, instrumental with working with the rest
of the city staff on this. This is really about the only way this is going to work. And how we envision it working, if we have a, a major wreck and block the main entrance access to the Business Park, it, there will be Knox Box Keys or a gate key that we have, and we can go down and open the gate and control the access around the property and then back out the other road. The reason the road is 20 foot wide is for two cars to pass on. So if we need to get somebody in there, another ambulance or a fire truck or, or whatever, somebody needs to get to work because this place is, you know, the other businesses are going to continue to operate while we work the accident, we can filter cars in there. Uh, don't see why it won't work. The road is going to be, the code requires that the road be constructed to support the heaviest fire apparatus, and we've always used, uh, 80,000 pounds as a, as a reference, which is also the, some, the max weight of a semi truck. So, you know, if Watson Metal Masters has a issue where they need to get a truck out for delivery and we have the road blocked, then they should be able to route right through there, no problem at all.
All right.
Answer your question?
Yes.
All right.
Any other questions for Mr. Tyson? Chief or Mr. Cameron? No questions? Okay. All in favor?